Good afternoon, everyone. It is now 5:33, so we'll go ahead and start the meeting today. There's enough, all commissioners are present, and the list has been posted as required, and we'll go ahead and get started. Please rise for an invocation by Commissioner Daniel Lopez.
Almighty God, who deserve to be faithful steward, or desire to be faithful stewards of your wisdom, bestow upon us the discernment to navigate the complexities of city business with integrity and the courage to stand firm in your truth, even in the face of adversity. May your wisdom be a beacon that guides us towards virtue. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I would like to welcome everybody to our City Commission meeting today, October 2nd, 2024. And Mark, if you can go ahead.
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate, participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 None. Well, actually, I had a question mark. On the consent agenda, there's B, and that has to do with the closing of the streets for Harlingen South, where I work, and, but I'm not going to be able to vote today, so is that a conflict?
If you're, you could just ask that it be withdrawn from the consent agenda and then just placed on the regular agenda.
Okay, but I'm not, even though I'm not going to vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to go ahead and-
I'd rather, I'd rather that we do that.
Okay.
So the record's clear.
Okay.
Moving on to item three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing joy for community relationships. Three, item three A, mayor's announcements. Can I approach you have anything to announce?
No, nothing to announce today.
Okay, sir. Item three B.
City manager's announcements. Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything to announce?
Yes, I do. On October 12th, the Run with the Heroes will be held at the Saturday at eight o'clock in the morning, so I encourage everyone to be out there, support our local police officers. On October 13th, there's going to be a barber race at the Royal Park. There'll also be a ribbon cutting for the pump track at that same park on October 12th at 9:00 a.m. And then on October the 19th, we have the Brews and Tunes scheduled from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. Encourage everybody to go out there and enjoy some music, some beverages, and some food, and have a good time. That's all I have.
Okay. Item three C, City Commission Member Announcements. Commissioners, do you have anything to announce?
No, ma'am.
I want to congratulate Pepe's for being open for 30 years. It's an, it's a Harlingen institution, some of the best food you can get in town, and it's one of the places that when people from out of the region come to Harlingen, I always take them there because you just can't get a bad meal there. The other one I want to congratulate is Pooch's Corner for being open for 15 years. They're celebrating right now, so unfortunately I wasn't able to attend, but these businesses that were able not only to survive but thrive after or during COVID, they're just a testament to the human spirit to want to endure and push through. So I really want to commend the business owners there and, and all the customers that use their services.
Nothing.
None.
Okay. Moving on to item four, proclamation presentation of awards. For A, Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
Good evening. Tonight Angela Haas from the Harlingen Animal Shelter. This is Legend. He's about a year old. He's a lab mix. He's been with us since July 30th. He is completely vaccinated. He was brought to us by a citizen that found him running loose, and so he's been with us ever since. He's super sweet. He is loving. He'll cuddle with you, and he is looking for his forever home. So if anybody is interested in adopting him, they're welcome to go by the Harlingen Animal Shelter at 1106 Markowski, or if they have questions about him or any other animals there at the shelter, they're welcome to call 956-216-5250. And so that is Legend.
Thank you, Shannon. He's, he looks adorable. Look, right now when Calista was taking his picture, he was posing. Beautiful dog.
He is very cute. Thank you.
Okay. Item four B, Lisa Putnam Day.
So our first proclamation is going to Ms. Lisa Putnam, and before we invite her up to say a few words and present her with her proclamation, I would like to read it, and it reads as follows. Whereas Lisa Putnam will be honored by friends, colleagues, and esteemed members of the bench and bar on her retirement from federal service, the United States Department of Homeland Security on September 27th of 2024, whereas Lisa Putnam adopted the city of Harlingen as her home for the past 34 years, as a valued and distinguished member of the community, embracing it as her home and committing to keeping our city safe. And whereas September 2024 also marks 34 years of various volunteer efforts in the city of Harlingen to include support of art, education for children, community safety and security, and untiring advocacy for animal welfare. And whereas the citizens of the city of Harlingen, Texas, wish to honor Ms. Putnam for her passion, commitment, and her example as a role model to other citizens of Harlingen, and her extraordinary record of public service to this community, and now therefore by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Harlingen, on behalf of the Harlingen City Commission and all the citizens hereof, I do proclaim September as 20, September 27th, 24, as Lisa Putnam Day. Ms. Putnam, if you'd like to come to the podium?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the honor. It is very unexpected and much of a surprise. I haven't lived anywhere as long as I've lived here, 34 years. I was an Army dependent, and I moved around a lot, so this has become my home. But thank you very much for honoring me today, and I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Putnam, if you could join us in the front so we can take a picture?
Look right there, these are special ones for our workday. Thank you so much, everyone. Okay, ready? Ready? One, two, and three. Got it.
Okay. Moving on to item four C, Harlingen Votes.
So Harlingen Votes is a new initiative that we'll be launching on our social media platforms that encourages every citizen, not just in Harlingen but everywhere, to exercise their right to vote and have their voice heard. And to memorialize this initiative being launched, we have a proclamation, and I will read it as it. Whereas Texas Cameron County Harlingen Elections Office is committed to encouraging broad voter registration, access, and citizen participation in elections, and whereas the Texas Cameron Harlingen Elections Office recognizes that many Americans are not able to vote because they miss a registration deadline, do not update their registration information, and are unfamiliar with how to register. And whereas the Texas Cameron Harlingen Elections Office recognizes the challenges that coronavirus pandemic is posing to many Americans of abilities to register to vote, and whereas the Texas Cameron Harlingen Elections Office recognizes the need for diverse partners such as nonprofits, libraries, businesses, colleges, and universities, and more, to work in the communities they serve to register citizens to vote. And whereas the, the need for reliable and trusted public information and education on voter registration is critical to Americans' active participation in elections and the integrity of the electoral process. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of Harlingen, Texas, on behalf of the City Commission, do hereby proclaim that the city of Harlingen commits to joining national efforts to support voter registration and citizen participation in elections. So if any of you would like to offer your thoughts on the importance of voting or making sure that we register to vote, the deadline to register to vote is October 7th, which is Monday.
One thing I always tell my students, as some of you may know, I'm a teacher at Harlingen South, and something I always stress with my students is that your most basic duty as an American is to go out there and vote. This is something I push with my students all the time. I don't care who you vote for or what you vote for, but as, as long as you go out there and vote, because voting is important. We've had many people throughout, throughout our history, American history, that have fought and have died for this right, and the fact that we are starting this initiative that's promoting, that our community go out there and vote is, I think is a great idea, and I fully support it, and I just encourage everyone out there in the community, please go out there and vote. It's your voice. Okay? So please, vote.
If we could take a photo with the commission with the proclamation?
Item five, Citizen Communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the City Commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the City Commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. Mayor Protem, we had two citizens sign up for public comments. We will start with Ms. Joan Rainier and Ms. Rachel Macias.
We're here on behalf of all the citizens. It used to be called Lake Shore Estates, but back in the 70s, it was sold off, and everybody who lives in that area owns their property and their mobile home. But we have a severe problem with animals running wild, dogs and cats. I've called the animal shelter several times, and I trapped two, I've trapped several, but they refused to pick them up. So I took them over to Markowski, and the lady there was very rude to me, and she wouldn't help me get the cats down because I have a broken sternum, so Rachel went with me. I had three pieces of identification, including my voter's registration, my driver's license, my health insurance card with my picture, but she made me go to my house and get either a water bill or electric bill. So Rachel was going to wait with the cats. She made her go outside. I came, I went right over and came right back. I wasn't gone 10 minutes, and she made her go outside and wait with the cats. And then, something else I didn't know, it was never addressed, but I had to pay $20 for each cat to the Humane Society, to the animal shelter. So I did, I, I, it was $41.02. I went ahead and paid it, or she wouldn't take the cats. So that needs to be addressed at some point, and also, our addresses, they're all 2601 Wilson Road with mobile home numbers, which mine is 24. My deed on my property is 24 Dillard, but when I leave Bible study to come home on Wednesday nights, I can't even get down my own street for the parking. They, each mobile home along there has got six or eight cars, and they're head in parking, and they're out in the street, and I have to wiggle my way around. And the mailboxes have been, somebody hit them and knocked them down, so I, we're suggesting that we have our own mailbox in front of our own house. I've been to the post office about it, and I've written letters about it and got nowhere, so that's why I'm here.
We were also wondering if it sits on an easement of the city, so wouldn't the city also be able to help us with the mailboxes or something like that? Because the post office, they say that they don't do anything about it. It's our responsibility.
We can't respond to you, but if you would give your name and number to Oscar, somebody from the city will call you later.
Okay. Thank you.
The number we have right here.
Okay. We have, we'll give you a call.
Okay.
We've done that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done that already.
Next, we have Ms. Dawn Cilly Leonard.
An animal shelter is a facility that houses and cares for lost, stray, abandoned, or unwanted animals, and makes them available for adoption. The purpose is to keep the animals safe while they wait to be adopted. Let me say that again. The purpose is to keep the animals safe. Recent numbers released on euthanasia in the city shelter are proverbial black eye for Harlingen. This is not what the city, the citizens of Harlingen were promised. A thunderous outcry from the public over the appalling mismanagement, mismanagement of the city shelter is deafening. Our tax dollars are being used to destroy a massive amount of animals in spite of strong opposition to this practice. Meanwhile, city staff is consistently standing at this podium with their hands out requesting more money. In June and July, you euthanized 203 out of 244 animals under the guise of a distemper outbreak. For your information, distemper is not curable, but it certainly is treatable. The protocols for distemper does not necessarily call for euthanasia, and it can be carefully managed in a shelter setting. That's a fact. Mayor, roughly 1,000 animals have been destroyed by your administration since the city took control of the shelter in February of this year. The Humane Society had a save rate of 92%. The city has a kill rate of approximately 77%, and it could be higher. This kill shelter will be your legacy, and because you and Commissioner Perez so viciously went after the Humane Society, chances are he could lose his election bid. Thankfully, there's a true animal advocate working hard to unseat him. In spite of this painful truth about the city shelter, I see an opportunity to right these wrongs. I call on the mayor and Commissioner Perez to put your feelings and pride aside, and resolve to return the shelter operations to the Humane Society so that they may provide services necessary to care for the health and safety of the animals. I propose mediation as a diplomatic approach to resolving the concerns of both parties. Engage in dialogue. Identify your issues, find the solutions, and settle it. I believe it would be in the best interest of the city, the taxpayers, and most importantly, our animals to work this out. I strongly encourage both parties to consider coming together to repair this fractured relationship and renew your partnership for the good of our community. Thank you, Commissioner Morales, for working with the Humane Society to restart the conversation with the city and keeping that door open. You have received a letter from the Humane Society stating their willingness to go forward. Are you balls in your court?
Thank you, Ms. Leonard.
That concludes our citizen communication. Mayor Protem. So we'll move on to item six, Approval of Minutes. Item 6A, Regular Meeting of August 21st, 2024.
May I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
I believe we need to pull that one item. Give me one second. I'm sorry, I was writing my notes.
Just a minute.
Oh, I apologize.
B, seven B.
I jumped ahead. I apologize. That's on me.
That's the minute.
Okay. So you have a second. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven, Consent Agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business, were included in the budget adoption process, or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member request an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. On the consent agenda, I'm going to go and put out item seven B. Is there anything else that needs to be pulled out? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven B, Consideration and Possible Action to Approve a Request from Robert Uvino, Harlingen High School South Assistant Principal, to close the following streets Thursday, October 24th, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. for their annual homecoming parade and bonfire. Streets are West Bothwell Street, Dixieland Road, Alani Circle, Everford Boulevard, Dixieland Road, West Adrian Street, Dixieland Road, Topez Drive, Dixieland Road, Garrett Road, Dixieland Road, Harlingen South Baseball Complex, Dixieland Road.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item eight, Staff Reports and Other Discussion Items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item eight A, City Manager's Report.
I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item eight B, Staff Reports. We have a presentation by Luis Vargas, City Engineer, on drainage project update.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Commissioners. My name is Luis Vargas. I'm the City Engineer for the record, and today I'm going to give you a drainage presentation or a presentation about drainage. We'll go over the September 15th rain event. We'll talk about recent rain events. We'll explain the reasons of why Harlingen floods. We'll also talk about updates to the ordinance. We'll go over some ongoing drainage projects, and we'll finish with future drainage projects. So September 15th rain event, the city received six inches in two hours of rain event. The National Weather Service issued a flash flood warning. It was classified as a 50-year storm, and we, in general and citywide, it took two to three hours for the rainwater to recede. The storm systems kept draining the water, and no blockages were found. The clean stormwater inlets and underground pipes played a crucial role in this rain event, and so it's important to have these clean all the time. Our staff is, is, is doing that daily. I'd like to point an example, and I want to show an example of, of this. In the top right picture, there's the intersection of Washington Avenue and Third Street. You can see the runoff overtopping the street. This picture was taken at 6:00 p.m. About two to three hours after, the water surface elevation had receded, meaning that the system was constantly draining. The previous rain events of 2018 and 2019 are, were more intense, were extreme rain events, and wanted to point out some key aspects of them. In 2018, we had a 100-year to 500-year storm event, and in 19, next year, it was a historic rainfall classified as a 500-year-plus storm event. It is important to note that the couple of weeks rain event was not as intense as those. A 500-year event is an extreme rainfall that exceeds the typical design standards. It is also important to say that our existing street infrastructure and rider limits make a 50-year design extremely costly.
Give me 500.
I'm sorry, 500. And no stormwater underground system in the Rio Grande Valley is capable of handling this intensity of rain. And so why does Harlingen flood? A few reasons. I'll start with the undersized drainage systems. Many underground stormwater systems in the city are undersized, meaning that they have pipes that are 12 inches, 15 inches, and 18-inch pipes in major collector streets. This is connected to the rapid urbanization reason, because the city developed with undersized drainage systems in the past. Rapid urbanization also means large and pervious areas with little pervious areas and no mitigation measures, right? Other reasons include blockages in drainage systems. That means debris in our, and sediment and vegetation in our inlets and stormwater lines. So that's why maintenance to our drainage systems is crucial, right? As I pointed earlier, our systems kept draining, and we didn't find any major blockages citywide. Topography plays an important role as well. I like to describe that as a condition of our city, not as a problem. It's something that we have to deal with, and it's something that all the citizens in the Rio Grande Valley have to deal with. The topography doesn't lend itself for easy solutions. On average, ground elevations in the city range from the high 30s to the 40, to the low 40s with a difference of five feet. So it's a little difference to make a stormwater system work. The other two are related to the weather. Heavy rainfall produce more, intense rains produce, I like to say that, you know, the rate at which we're getting water from the sky is higher than the rate at which we can absorb and we, and at which we can drain. And so that sentence is crucial. It's a volumetric difference. I explained it in, in short, that in terms, intense storms produce more rain than our ground and drainage systems can handle, right? In simple terms. Climate change is another factor. There's data that shows that prolonged droughts are followed by heavy rains and heavier drain, rains, and also the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration, or NOAA, continually updates its numbers, and one of those numbers is the rainfall intensity, right? That number keeps changing because more frequent and more intense rains are happening closer together. So it's important to know that this really means that intense, more intense rains are becoming more frequent. And so in recent years, the city and city staff has updated several components of its ordinance. Since October of 2020, the city required detention ponds or the winding adjacent ditches for any new subdivisions in the city limits and the ETJ. 2008, the drainage criteria only consisted of stormwater systems of five-year. Currently, the city requires 50-year detention ponds, 25-year stormwater systems underground, which mean they are better capable and are more equipped to handle bigger rains. Harlingen is the only city in the valley that requires 25-year storm sewer systems. The rest require a 10-year system, and this is a good thing. In 2023, just last year, the city updated its flood prevention ordinance, which is Chapter 105. ordinance, which is chapter one oh five. The key changes in that ordinance are the use of the base level engineering tool, which is a tool provided by FEMA. It's a website in which engineers and anybody can select a location and estimate the flood depth. Also, uh, key change was the freeboard requirements, and basically, the freeboard is the distance between the one-hundred-year water surface elevation, uh, to the finished floor of the new structures. We require that any new structure in Harlingen needs to be eighteen inches above that elevation or twenty-four inches, depending on the location. The minimum requirement from FEMA is at that water surface elevation of the one-hundred-year storm. So we are one and a half, uh, feet above, or in some cases, two, twenty-four inches.
I had a question, those updates to the ordinance, those were in twenty-twenty-one, correct?
Which ones, the, uh, for the detention ponds?
The fifty-year detention for the subdivisions?
Yes, um, yes. We, we, there, there's been a few changes. Uh, in twenty-twenty-two, uh, we added the, um, the option of widening ditches. And before that, in twenty-twenty-one, you're correct, um, it was...
So that's something that we currently did. I remember, cause I remember, um, voting for that, I remember doing that. But, so you can say that as of right now, we've become a lot more proactive when it comes to, um, drainage in the city?
That is correct. That's absolutely correct. Yes, yes, sir. So with that, I'll give you an overview of our ongoing projects. I'll start with District One. This is, uh, in the Pickens and Davis, uh, streets. This is a stormwater system that is system twenty-twenty, twenty-three. It's currently in construction. We are twenty percent. We are upsizing and replacing approximately three thousand six hundred linear feet of stormwater underground pipes. These systems are surrounded by the, uh, streets of Matt's Avenue and New Combs Highway, McFetford Street, and Business Seventy-seven. Uh, we have a cost of one point ninety-six million, and, uh, you can see in the, uh, bottom right, um, image, the proposed improvements. This picture shows the, uh, box culvert being installed. Uh, it is a four-foot-by-three, uh, stormbox culvert. We are replacing a twenty-four-inch line in this street. It's a huge difference, so we're bringing this street and this, these subdivisions to the new standards, right? As I, as I explained earlier. And in the future, we plan to add a detention pond as a mitigation measure. Uh, to the east is a six-acre detention pond. Staff has recently, uh, submitted an application to the Texas Water Development Board. Texas Water Development Board is reviewing pre-application, pre-applications at the moment, and, uh, if invited, staff will submit a full application. Another project in District One is the Adams Crossing Stormwater System Improvements, which is system two forty-four. Uh, we have a completed design. In there, we're adding one thousand six hundred linear feet of thirty-six-inch storm pipe, and we're adding a second outfall to the Thirteenth Street ditch. Uh, this ditch drains into a future thirty-acre detention pond, which is being, which will be built as a, another mitigation measure by the Cameron County Drainage District Number Five. And you can see there on the image on the screen, um, it's about, close to a mile from the proposed improvements. This pond will not only help this subdivision, but other subdivisions that drain to it. In the image, you can see in green, a completed pond by D D. Number Five, uh, which is also mitigation measure for the surrounding properties. For this project, we have an estimated cost of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, and we are expecting a grant award, award letter from T D. M. To start construction. We're ready to go, we're just expecting that letter to start construction. And improvements related to that area done in-house by our Public Works Department, uh, in the Thirteenth Street ditch are shown in the screen. Uh, four thousand four hundred linear feet, uh, of the Thirteenth Street was regraded and widened. The smoother and wider a ditch is, the faster the water can flow and the more water can carry. In District Two, we're doing a regional detention pond. We call it the Lozano Detention Pond because it is right next to Lozano Street. It is approximately fifteen acres in area. It is capable, or will be capable, to detain more than twenty million gallons of water, which is about the volume of thirty Olympic swimming pools. Phase one is being, uh, constructed at the moment, at the moment, or is currently in construction. We're eighty-five percent complete. We're missing a pilot channel in the bottom. And, uh, Public Works will continue phase two after phase one is completed. We have an estimated cost for this complete detention pond of one million. As I said, this pond is being constructed in-house. I'd like to point out that this pond played a crucial role in the last rain event. This picture was taken at six P M. I personally drove out there and, and took the picture. All this water is being stored at the pond and not in the streets, which is great. That's what we want. This is the following day, um, a drone view of the Lozano Pond. It was taken around nine A M., and in the picture, you can see the future phases. Moving on to District, or moving on to more projects in District Two, uh, we have a ongoing project in the Lazy Palm Subdivision, which is system two forty-four. The project is scheduled to start this month. We are planning to replace approximately five hundred linear feet of stormwater underground pipe. We have a cost of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, and this project is gonna connect to a development happening next door to the east, which is the, the park at Roosevelt subdivision. Both the system and the detention pond will help the, uh, residential subdivision to mitigate flood, flooding. The pond is sized to detain not only the new development, but also the existing subdivision. Another major project in District Two is the Jefferson Avenue Stormwater System Improvements, which is system one twenty-four. For that one, uh, we're doing improvements from Third Street to Thirteenth Street, and from Madison to Van Buren. All those areas will see benefits in terms of drainage. This project includes a twelve-by-eight-feet box that is planned to discharge into the Jefferson Avenue ditch that is to the east. Recent years, this dish was concrete-lined, so it's more able to carry water faster. This project has a key component, which is a railroad crossing, and in that railroad crossing, we're, uh, installing three seventy-two-inch stormwater pipes at the intersection of Seventh Street and Jefferson. This is the only component that is missing for the design. That's why I have it at ninety-five percent. We expect to have a permit by the end of this year, and with that, we expect to have the phase-two award from T D. M. The ten, the, the project is grant-funded by T D. M., and it's got a cost share of seventy-five to twenty-five. Twenty-five being the local share. Another major project in District Two is the Fifth and Seventh Stormwater System Improvements. We call it Fifth and Seventh, but it really encompasses a larger area. Fifth and Seventh is only one phase of this project. The project is currently at sixty percent design, and the up-sized pipes will connect to a future major project in Commerce Street, which is currently in design at twenty-five, uh, twenty percent. It is funded with the Pre-Disaster Mitigation Grant earmarked by U.S. Representative Vicente Gonzalez. Moving on to District Two, we have the Twenty-first Street Storm, Storm System Improvements, which is system seven. On this one, uh, will the streets or areas that will see benefits in terms of drainage start at Austin Avenue in the north, uh, to Harris Avenue on the south. The two outfalls are large storm, stormboxes that will also discharge into the Jefferson ditch. The design for this one has been completed. We're just awaiting the phase-two award from T D. M. It also had a, a railroad permit. However, it was less complicated, and so that's why we were able to get it faster. Also, on District Three, we have the, um, Hakaranda Storm System Improvements, a residential area, uh, in which we're increasing the size of stormwater inlets in the street. This will, this will help the street and will also help surrounding streets to capture more water, and it's only a component of a larger project, which is the Treasure Hills and Twenty-Fifth Street, uh, Stormwater Improvements Project. The Treasure Hills and Twenty-Fifth Project is funded with T D. M. With the ninety to ten, uh, cost share, and we're also expecting an award letter from T D. M. For the, uh, Treasure Hills and Twenty-Fifth Project, the grant funds will be used for design and construction. For the Hakaranda Project, design has been completed, a, a construction award has been executed, and the project is gonna start next, next week. I'm sorry, construction started last week.
Before we move on, just a quick question. Yeah, I know we've talked about the Treasure Hills, they have like, uh, isakas behind some of their houses, correct? Uh, and that, who owns, is it the property owner that owns the middle of that isaka?
Right.
And I know that, I believe when you and I have talked in the past, that there's no H O. Way to maintain those isakas, correct? I know that it's been an issue, you brought it before.
Right, right. The property owners own into the lake, mostly midway into the lake, zigzags a little bit. And there's no egress into the lake, there's houses all over, uh, so that even if they wanted to form a H O. A. And tax themselves to drain their, to dig out their private property, it would be pretty much impossible.
Are you saying to get the...
And then the decades I've lived here, you know, we used, used to take the kids fishing there, and, um, it's all silted in.
There's no way that we can work with the, the property owners, uh, because this would, it would make a great detention pond if we can dredge it, essentially. Is there, cause it's to their benefit.
O- okay, but just remember that a detention pond, for the most part, is dry unless there's a rain event.
Correct.
I don't think they're gonna want that lake area to be dry until there's a rain event, so they're gonna want it filled with water as a feature. So, if we do anything, the one thing we, we'd have to get a grant, because, um, spending...
Private property?
Yeah, that's private property, and spending, uh, government money there is gonna be, that's all sorts of issues we have to deal with. So, a, a grant would be better, but I think the one thing we can do to help with flooding is just, um, to try to remove some of that silt and make it deeper, and just...
Like, I figured, the way I think they do it in Rancho Viejo, correct? Cause they have the isakas, they have like weird dams, right? So once the water reaches up to a certain point, then it starts moving on to the next section.
Right.
But I figured why it seems to be an opportunity to, a cheap or less expensive opportunity to relieve flooding in your area, just about.
Yeah, the first thing we need to do is dredge, they have to be dredged, because there, in areas of water, uh, that, the silt has come up so high that it's, it's over the water level, so...
And if it's an issue of, of ownership, right? Like, if their ownership's to halfway across or halfway into this lake, what benefit do they get from it that they would not get if they were to, let's say hypothetically, voluntarily, uh, turn it over to the city, and the city then make it a retention or detention pond?
Or you'd have to resubdivide all that property to get an easement from there.
Just an idea.
Yeah. There's, there, there are solutions, we just have, it just costs money.
Yeah, just about. Mike, um...
Moving on to District Four, um, this area is rapidly developing, and we have some planned improvements for the Lipscomb Drain Ditch. We plan to replace a thirty-inch stormpipe at Louisiana Street with a eight-by-six stormbox culvert. This project is being done by the contractor and developer for the Allison subdivision. As I said, more properties are being developed in the area, and all the engineers and developers and contractors are planning to develop this area responsibly with city guidance, of course. One crucial aspect to this area is the lake that you see at the bottom of the image. This is called the Horseshoe Lake. It's currently dry, and it's owned by the Irrigation District Number One. So the idea is that we acquire the lake for the purposes of drainage and attention. Perfect example of how to adequately develop a city. Another project in District Four is a, um, intersection at Colorado and Liberty. It's localized flooding in that intersection. We plan to install a thirty-six-inch, uh, outfall to the Arroyo Colorado. We have a design ready, uh, however, we've been working on getting a permit, uh, with the I B. I B. W. C. Once we acquire the permit, we'll bid the project and start construction. On District Five, uh, we have another residential, um, stormwater improvement on Sun Chase and Sable Palm. This is system two fifty-two. In there, we're planning to replace five hundred linear feet of stormwater pipe. It is some country-state subdivision, and construction is starting this month.
This month?
Correct, yes. And for that one, we have a cost of three hundred and twenty-two thousand.
How long, more or less, is that gonna take?
If I remember correctly, three to four months.
Okay.
Another project in District Five is the Adams Gardens Irrigation Ditch Culvert. Excuse me. Um, on District Five, uh, and particularly on system S, uh, in last year, the city installed a culvert in the Hickhilt Road. Uh, we added two thirty-six-inch lines there to increase the drainage capacity of the ditch. This, uh, crossing is within city limits, and we're in the process of doing the other three culverts, uh, downstream north that are outside of the city limits and are owned by the Irrigation District Number One. The idea is that the irrigation district crews, uh, rebuild them or, or replaces them or upsizes them, and, uh, we fund the project, right? At a lower cost than bidding it out. More ongoing projects, uh, this one is shared between districts in District Two, Three, and Four. This one's a major project in Ed Carey, uh, Drive. We have improvements from Sesame Drive, uh, to Riverside Drive, and, um, in there, we're replacing approximately five thousand linear feet of stormwater pipes. We have completed the design for this one, and we recently submitted an application to the FEMA BRIC grant. The grant was not awarded, and we plan to reapply next year with an updated benefit-cost analysis. This system will discharge to the Hale Ditch and Glasscock Ditch. And it's important to note that in this ditch, recently, our public works crews also regraded and widened ditch. We, uh, cleaned, regraded, and widened approximately three thousand three hundred linear feet in these ditches. So projects coming soon. We have the Wichita Avenue Stormwater System Improvements, which is going upstream on the system. The proposed, there's, we propose to install an eight-by-four stormbox in the street that will discharge into the, uh, existing, uh, Lozano Detention Pond. So there's really more faces to that area. And more faces are... And more faces are shown in the picture on the right. We plan improvements in I Street, Fair Park Boulevard, West Jefferson Avenue with large box culverts from five-by-three to six-by-three boxes. More progress coming soon in that area. This one is the expansion of the existing detention ponds in the Harlingen PD building. We believe that it, there's room to expand the ponds. They're fenced, and so there's an opportunity to allow more storage for detention there. Of course, our planning study in terms for drainage and flood protection, or as I call it, the Drainage Master Plan, which is coming soon, coming next year in May. The study encompasses almost three hundred square miles, areas that mainly drain to the Arroyo Colorado. It will give us an inventory of the existing drainage infrastructure in the area. It will also give us recommendation, recommendations as to how we grow, how we drain the city. And will also provide conceptual designs for areas that are flown, prone to flooding. It's really the roadmap in terms of drainage for the city.
Who's doing the study?
Civil Systems Engineering.
I thought they were supposed to have finished this in May.
No, it was, it was a two-year project.
A three-year.
Three-year project, and so it's supposed to be next year, and they'll be also completing the Commerce Street project the same month, design.
So it's May of twenty-five, not twenty-four?
Correct.
We've, we've been able to get some conceptual projects from CSE, and some of them have been shown already in the presentation.
And they do have a public hearing scheduled for December of this year?
That is correct. Another major future project is the Commerce Street project. Currently at design, twenty percent. We're expecting to see progress bring, progress prints from the design plans of thirty percent very soon. This street project will include a key component for drainage, and that component is a ten-by-ten box conduit that is planned to be three-point-two miles long from the north end at Business Seventy-Seven to the south end of Business Seventy-Seven. It will discharge into the Arroyo Colorado. This project will greatly reduce the flooding in any street that intersects Commerce. It's planned to handle a one-hundred-year storm. For this component of the project, we submitted a application to FEMA for the brick grant early in the year. We didn't get it, but we plan to reapply next year with updated technical documentation. It helps when you have a complete design in the application. At this point, we don't have it yet, but we still feel like we can put together a strong application for the grant. Another project, major project as well, is the West Street Ten-by-Ten Box. This one is one-point-five miles long. It's on the, of course, west side of Commerce, also in a diagonal fashion. It plans to capture the drainage area from Jackson Avenue all the way to Lincoln Avenue. And so it avoids, avoids crossing the railroad in so many places to go to Commerce. And so we'll eliminate the crossings and go straight to the Arroyo without going east. We plan to receive a conceptual plan next year in May twenty-twenty-five with the Drainage Master Plan. We also submitted an application for this major project. TWDB is reviewing pre-application, and if invited, the city will submit a full application. Another future project is the Harlingen Irrigation Main Canal Conversion. This one proposes to bury the existing irrigation canal from the railroad north to the north end of the Expressway Seventy-Seven. When I say bury is taking the surface water that is used for drainage and put it in, into an underground pipe, four thousand feet, and use the existing drain, uh, canal for drainage. And so with that, we would be able to capture the floodwaters of the surrounding streets, starting at Harrison Avenue and all the way to the Expressway. We also submitted an application to the FEMA brick grant early in the year. It wasn't awarded, but we plan to submit it again next year with updated data. Also submitted a application to TWDB. They are reviewing the pre-applications, and if invited, the city will submit a full application.
On this one, because we're in like a drought region, and there's been a lot of talk about converting open irrigation ditches into closed or covered irrigation ditches, have we looked at going that avenue by saying it's a water preservation project with a drainage component added on?
Yes, yes, that was mentioned in the application, and is a component that the agencies like.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, water conservation is, is an important aspect of the project. And the irrigation is, is not in opposition of this project, Irrigation District. And so related improvements in-house for this area. Public Works crews cleaned one-point-two miles of this ditch. It's a Tech Dot owned ditch, but we needed to clean it. It's about six thousand three hundred thirty linear feet. And we're working with Tech Dot in maintenance agreements and also in cost reimbursements. There's a big difference in the, in the pictures there.
What I love about this, can you go back, I'm sorry. What I love about this project the most is that this project all started when a, when a constituent of District Five reached out to me and mentioned how, how long that, how long that ditch had been un, you know, hadn't been maintained for such a long time. And all I had to do was reach out to Oscar and Christopher there at Public Works, and they did their magic, and they were able to get this done. So again, on behalf of the, you know, my, the constituents in my district, I know Frank feels the same way. I wanna thank you guys, because this was something that was just kind of thrown at you, and you guys worked with Tech Dot, and you were able to get it done, and because of that, all these people in that area are benefiting from that. So as usual, I know I've told Public Works this many, many times, but you guys are rock stars, and we appreciate everything you do.
Just out of curiosity, was that Fred Garcia?
No, I don't think so.
He called me.
Yeah. Um, was that it?
Uh, I have just one last slide. This is an email to report flooding. It's important to see the pictures, and with the physical address, staff looks at those pictures. They also help with the grant applications, and also alert our staff to send somebody and clean, you know, any blockages that may be in our systems. So we encourage the community to report it. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is it possible to get a copy of this email, or?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Yeah, he would just be me too. I was gonna ask, Gabe, is it possible to actually post this on our website or even our social media? Because I know with all the rain event that we had recently, a lot of people were worried about drainage. And the reason we did this, guys, or the, for the folks at home, is that we wanted you all to know that we are actively, everybody on this commission from, from District One all the way up to my district, District Five, we all care heavily about drainage, and we're proactively doing these different projects in order to improve the drainage in our area. So, you know, we just wanted you guys to know this, and if it's possible, can we post this, so people can know about this?
We can do that. We just wanted to make the presentation first to the council before we put anything on the web.
Okay, well, thank you, and again, Luis, you do an amazing job, and we're really appreciative of everything you do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing on to Item C eight C, Discussion and Consideration Regarding the Possible Future Adoption of the Twenty-Twenty-Four International Codes and the Twenty-Twenty-Three National Electrical Codes, Planning and Development.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Ruth Eamon Commissioners. Every, every four years, our Building Inspections Division gets evaluated by the insurance companies. So from these evaluations, they set their insurance rates. So they, they look at different aspects, the number of employees, their credentials, training opportunities. But the, the big thing that they look at is that we have the latest building codes adopted. Right now, we have the Twenty-Eighteen, and they're recommending that we adopt Twenty-Twenty-Four codes for the life and safety of the, of the community. So this is very important, so that we can get good ratings from the insurance companies.
So just, just an update and housekeeping for the juice.
So we have some slides, there's a lot of information in your packet on the changes. We have a few slides that we can present, but we're just asking for your blessing that so that in two weeks, we will have the ordinance for approval in, in first reading.
And, and the actual code will take place till six months after the...
Correct, so the proposal is in your next bidding, the ordinance will go before you for first reading, two weeks after that, second reading, and then the Twenty-Four, Twenty-Twenty-Four codes will become effective six months after that. And that's, that's in the ordinance. And in this, in those six months, we're gonna reach out to the contractors to explain the, the changes. So we will, we will be doing that.
Presumably, all the cities throughout the state, if not the country, will be adopting these, right? International Fire Code, International Electric Code, all that.
We all, we all get evaluated.
Correct.
Right, so Samito got evaluated first, so they're, they're first to do it, and we came next. But eventually, they're, we're all, yeah, we're all doing it, they...
Have you had a chance to read through, through the codes? I know that, I believe it was the fire code, they, I forgot, a city in the west side of the valley updated and went to the newest fire code, made the Twenty-Twenty-One fire code, and they required like something strenuous, like more sprinkler systems, and we'd usually, is that accurate, right?
I'll defer to our building official, Mr. Martinez. I don't believe that's changing, but I, I will defer to Mr. Martinez, our chief building official, to, to elaborate on that.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members. Yeah, the fire code, yeah, there's some changes, more restrictions on, for life safety, for commercial buildings, mostly assemblies and daycares, which, again, we go on a daily basis, deenforcement. Some of them are electrical insulation, window requirements, nailing patterns for window, for windstorm. They're redesigning the, that concept, because of the events that we've been having as of late. They're making it more stringent to, to be able to withstand any higher wind speeds and prevent any sort of damage to, to homes, right, constructions. So that's what we're trying to adopt, again, as Mr. Saratun mentioned, this is a requirement that we are looked at in, because of those ratings. The insurances base their fees for, for our residents, for our community, and we have low ratings. They usually ask that we're at least a code addition below the latest one, in this case, Twenty-Twenty-Four is the newest. They wanted us to be at least in Twenty-Twenty-One. We're under Twenty-Eighteen, so our, our scores were affected a bit, because we were two additions under. So that's what we're asking to see if we could adopt those, so help our scores and our community in reference to their, their insurance costs, right? That's how they base their rates within the communities.
This is not an action item, it's just a presentation. Is that, is that all you have to present?
We have slides.
You want to go through them real quick?
What can you?
No?
Can you go through them?
It, it is what it is, right? We just have to adopt it, and I said, put it on consent for the next agenda, and we give, we give the, we give the contractors on all that as much notice as we can, and if we can push off the implementation to make sure everyone's fully looped in.
Once we make the adoption, and we'll give, we'll put a memos on our applications advising that the changes are coming. And again, it'd be six months from the time that we adopted to where we're starting implementing those new codes. So we'll give them ample time, and we'll provide them this breakdown of the changes that would affect them on the project, future projects.
Right.
Again, anybody applying prior to that code enforcement or adoption, they'll fall under our current, current codes. So give them ample time to make adjustments on their designs based on, on the codes.
Thank you all.
Okay, so go ahead and go to...
Okay, moving on to Item A D, a presentation by Animal Shelter.
Good evening. I'm just gonna be giving y'all some numbers and some information on things that have been ongoing at the animal shelter. Not going back to the beginning, but starting in July, we did have twenty-seven animals that were turned in to the animal shelter by their owners, so they were physically taken to the shelter and dropped off. A hundred and seventy were strays that citizens found that, that took them to the shelter and dropped them off at the shelter. For the month of July, there were over a hundred and twenty animals that were euthanized for medical reasons. Those medical reasons can vary, depending on the individual animal. But of those medical reasons, the veterinarian that we have contracted with, who has over forty years of experience, evaluated those animals, and based on his experience, based on different factors, we referred to his expertise in that, and, and went with what he felt was in the best interest and the most humane for that animal for those medical conditions. For the month of August, fifty-seven animals were turned in by their owners to the animal shelter. Thirty-five were turned in as strays to the animal shelter. Over a hundred were euthanized for medical reasons. Again, based on the veterinarian's experience, based on his determination, they were euthanized. We're never going to question a licensed veterinarian's recommendations. September, there were seventy animals turned into the shelter by their owners that were dropped off, and there were eighty-seven strays that were brought to the animal shelter by citizens who found them. The animal shelter is only so big, it can only take in so many animals. Euthanized, I hadn't gotten that added, that probably about another eighty to a hundred that were euthanized for medical reasons, again, looked at by the veterinarian, and based on his recommendation, that's what was done. Every single day, the animal shelter operates at its capacity for care, every single day. There's not a day that goes by that they have even three or four open kennels to take in animals, because they operate at their capacity for care every day. They are stretched to their limits. There are only so many kennels in the animal shelter. Using pop-up crates is not really looked at as a humane situation for long periods. For short periods of time, sure, they're great, but for day in, day out, months at a time, it, the state requires us to have a kennel for an animal that's large enough for the animal to stand up, turn around, and lay down comfortably in, and that keeps them out of their excrement. Pop-up crates generally, for the most part, do not comply with that, depending on the size of the dog and the size of the crate. Again, we've worked very closely with Dr. Kellogg. We've worked to address the upper respiratory condition. Based on his recommendations, we've made change to our cleaning protocols, we've made changes to our disinfecting protocols. We are having ongoing conversations with him, and, and continuing on a regular basis to brainstorm and do the best we can for these animals. It's a public safety issue to have these animals out running loose. It's, it's har, it can be harmful for the animals themselves as well. So nothing is ever perfect, so we always wanna brainstorm and always continue to improve in doing what... So we always want to brainstorm and always continue to improve in doing what we can for these homeless animals. Discussions are being had about maybe closing for a day or two, again, discussions, trying to do deep cleaning. Most of us do deep cleanings on our homes at least once a year, but we don't have the number of animals in our homes that the shelter does as well. This deep cleaning would allow to help with the disease, any type of diseases that are going on, any illnesses, things of that sort. We're also talking about setting up appointments to drop off animals so that we can have vaccines ready, so that as soon as that animal gets there, even before it comes in the building, we're vaccinating it. Again, in an effort to try to help prevent any type of illness or disease outbreak. These are all discussions that we're currently having, and again, we're continuing to brainstorm and work to do the best we can for these animals with what we have. So we just kind of wanted to give you a little update and keep, keep going and doing the best we can.
Okay, any questions? Okay, Shannon, like I've told you this many times, I appreciate all the work that you and all your staff there at the animal shelter do. I know you got, all of you guys are dedicated animal lovers, and you do the best that you can in the circumstances that, that you presented with. So again, please extend my thanks, and I know the rest of the commission's thanks on all the, on with the rest of your staff there at the animal shelter.
They, they work tirelessly, tirelessly, day in and day out. They love these animals. You grow attached to them regardless of how much you may try to keep them at arm's length. Though, those little eyes looking at you, you, you just can't help but get attached to them. Every one of the staff that works there loves animals, and they do it because they want to do what's in the best interest for those animals.
Shannon, I was, it'd be fair to say that I was a little thrown off when I first heard the numbers about the euthanization. I was unaware that it was, you know, to that level. I know you guys do work as hard as you can in the situation you're in, and I know you all are looking at updating your plans, programs, policies, and protocols. I'd like, if you can, and Gabe, for us to be updated once those implementations come in, because this is, like you said, a, a public health issue. This is a humanitarian, not a humanitarian, but a humane issue, right?
Right, absolutely.
And we want to make sure we handle this in, in the best ethical, moral, fiscally responsible way we can, and make sure that we can get a win for the animals, a win for the citizens, a win for the city. And so if you can keep us posted, please.
Absolutely.
And in situations like this, I would like us to be updated beforehand. As you can imagine, I don't like being, like you say, blindsided, but I would like the information beforehand so that I, I think the whole commission, so that we can be looped in and educated and we know what's going on, rather than, you know, someone coming up and, and throwing these numbers at us and really having, you know, wanting to look more information.
Absolutely.
We can, we can place an item as a presentation every month at one of the meetings just to talk about what it is that we're doing at the shelter and where we are with all the pets that we're taking in, so.
Well, the thought is, is we need to implement a better program and policies and all that.
And we're working on that right now.
Correct. And that's what I'm looking for, is how do we improve?
Right.
How do we, every day, how do we get better? I know you guys are working on that, Dr. Kellogg's working on that, but I would like the commission and the citizens to know that it is a top priority for us and that we're always looking to, I, do better in every aspect, whether it's drainage, whether it's streets, whether it's everything.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Shannon.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Moving on to item nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of that public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. Mayor Protem, we had no submissions for public hearing comments for this agenda.
Okay, I said three individuals.
Yes, sir. Okay, here we go. Okay, item 9A, public hearing for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 202 North Ed Carey Drive, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Block 1, Camino Real subdivision, applicant W. Applicant, no. Okay. Okay? If there's no one else, I will now open up the public hearing. If there's no one here to comment, I will go ahead and close it. An item 9B, public hearing for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 1250 North 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of Lot 11 and the west half of Lot 12, Block 1, North Crown Heights subdivision. If there's no one here, I'll open up the hearing. If there's no one here to make public comment, go ahead and close it. 9C, public hearing for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 1313 Havreford Boulevard, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Havreford Place, Section 1 subdivision. I will go ahead and open up the public hearing. No one's here to comment, go ahead and close it. Item 9D, public hearing for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail district located at the Stripes Convenience Store located at 1725 South F Street, bearing a legal description of Lots 1 and 2, Harlingen Service Center subdivision. Go ahead and open up the public comment. No one is here to comment, go ahead and close it. Item 9E, public hearing for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in Neighborhood Services District for the Royal Mart Food Store located at 1222 South First Street, bearing a legal description of Lots 10, 11, and 12, Block 2. I'll go ahead and open up the public comment. No one's here, go ahead and close it. Item 9F, public hearing for a special use permit to allow a battery storage energy facility in a general retail district located along the north side of East Harrison Avenue, approximately 485 feet east of Loop 499, bearing a legal description of two acres out of the west, 6.88 acres, Block 49, Palmetto Company subdivision. Go ahead and open up public comment. No one's here to say anything, go ahead and close it. Item 9G, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
My name is Chris Rose with Aggreco, on behalf of the battery storage facility. I do have some slides if you want to bring it up.
Normally, you can just present. We don't have slides by the public.
Sure thing. What we're here for is a 9.9 megawatt battery storage facility on East Harrison Ave. The biggest thing for us is, a lot of questions that we have is, why do we choose this, this piece of land for a battery storage project? First off, it's, it's within one mile of the substation on East Grimes. We are working with TechStot for a Gentai route to East Grimes. But the biggest thing here is immediate and significant tax revenues. In our presentation, you'll see over a 30-year tax revenue or tax forecast, going back to the city is over a half a million dollars. The biggest thing here is looking at the efficiency of the site compared to tax revenues. The site is less than one acre of, of actually developed site. So you think about site to revenue, after the first 10 years, of course, of depreciation, the city's still getting about $11,000 a year on a site that's less than an acre. Long-term financial stability, as I mentioned, once 2037 hits, it is $11,000. Now, the biggest thing here is the site is owned by a private owner that has some tax exemptions on it. Once this project is built, we have tax forecasts into 2026 of almost $50,000 going to the city of Harlingen. So right immediately, you have tax revenues going to the city compared to, if you wait for commercial development, which could take years. We're at a crucial time now with a presidential election where we don't know if inflation is going to go higher or lower. So you think about my, someone like myself who has aspirations to open a small business, I can't do it on two incomes, you know? Especially with inflation right now, if you're looking at commercial development, who's to say that this is going to happen within, let's just say, two years? Right off the bat, within one year, you have tax revenues going back to the city. I mentioned the efficient use of space, one acre of land, you're getting 11 once depreciation. After 2037, you're guaranteed at least $11,000. That's predicted on a yearly basis of tax revenue. So I mentioned that the, the landowner is, is a private landowner. The biggest thing here, it's community support. The landowner owns Valley Baptist Missions Education Center. So a lot of questions in the planning and zoning was, how are we going to help the city? Well, the biggest thing here, again, as I mentioned, is the partnership ensures revenues not just generated back to the city, but also helps with education. So we want to be partners within the city. We don't want us to be a business within the city. We want to partner with the city. And who's to say within a year, our relationship becomes so strong and grows organically that we don't put another three of these projects here? So you have another guarantee, let's say after 10 years, you have another guaranteed $44,000 of tax revenue on four acres. So if you look at it as a whole, you know, we grow our relationship together, it's not just Aggreco and the city of Harlingen, we do this together. One thing that we do do is we, we give back to the, the community as well. We have projects in the city of Corpus, we gave a $25, $2,500 grant to the athletic program, just to, just to say, listen, we're going to be in the city, we want to be one with the city. So we want to be here, we want to, we want to develop, and we want to have a relationship with the city of Harlingen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to speak too, sir?
No, I'm just, my name's Doyle Courtney, I'm with the Civil Engineering Firm.
Okay, okay.
Just in case you had any questions from that side.
Okay, any questions, guys?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this ordinance, on its, no?
I do.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment on that. Where am I at?
G.
G? Okay. Okay, item 9G, public hearing for a rezoning request from non-des, non-designated district to residential, single-family district for a 55.90 acre tract of land out of the survey 295 Stewart Place subdivision, located along the south side of Garrett Road, approximately 650 feet east of Altas Palmas. Is there anybody here for comment? No one, I don't see anyone for comment, go ahead and close up the public hearing. H, item 9H, public hearing amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, Zoning Article 7, Section 111, point dash 173, non-residential height restrictions, by requiring a special use permit for buildings greater than five stories in height. I'll go ahead and open up the public comment. Don't see anyone here, go ahead and close it. And item, well, there was one, this one, you told me?
No, that's, that's, no, that's for ordinance. But that's, we have to go through these first.
Okay, okay. Okay?
Okay, moving on to item 10, action items. City Commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item 10A, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 202 North Ed Carey Drive, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Block 1, Camino Real subdivision, applicant Tim Yahowa, planning and developing.
Mark?
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail GR district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 202 North Ed Carey Drive, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Block 1, Camino Real subdivision.
Any discussion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Vote.
Yeah. All, I'm being a brief fart. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for an on-premise consumption in a general retail district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 1250 North 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of Lot 11 and the west half of Lot 12, Block 1, North Crown Heights subdivision, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail GR district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 1250 North 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of Lot 11 and the west one half of Lot 12, Block 1, North Crown Heights subdivision.
Do I have motion?
So moved.
Second.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10C, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for an on-premise consumption in a general retail district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 1313 Havreford Boulevard, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Havreford Place, Section 1 subdivision, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit to allow the sale of alcohol beverage for, beverages for on-premise consumption in a general retail district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 1313 Havreford Boulevard, bearing a legal description of Lot 1, Havreford Place, Section 1 subdivision.
Motion?
Second. Motion approved, as you were.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Item 10D, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for an on-premise consumption in a general retail district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 1725 South F Street, bearing a legal description of Lots 1 and 2, Harlingen Service Center subdivision, planning and development.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mark.
I know. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in general retail district for a Stripes Convenience Store located at 1725 South F Street, bearing a legal description of Lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Harlingen Service subdivision.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10E, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a Neighborhood Services District for the Arroyo Mart Food Store located at 1222 South First Street, bearing a legal description of Lots 10, 11, and 12, Block 2, Lilian Bush Edition. This item was tabled during the September 4, 2024 meeting, planning and development.
I'll make a motion to remove from table and put back into play.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's on. You can read the caption.
Read the caption. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to allow the sale of alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption in a Neighborhood Services NS District for the Arroyo Mart Food Store located at 1222 South First Street, bearing a legal description of Lots 10, 11, and 12, Block 2, Lilian Bush Edition.
Any discussion? Frank?
No. I had some concerns last time.
No? None. Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Most impatience.
Item 10F, consideration, oh, I'm sorry.
We did, the last time we talked about this one item, we talked about doing the notices in English and Spanish. I know you did it, thank you very much, I saw it in the minutes. And we're going to make sure that that's the process moving forward, correct?
If, if that's what the commission wants, we can do that.
I believe that's the best, it's in the best interest of everyone.
I agree.
And I think that if the charter amendments pass, it's going to be required because it's going to call for the notices to be in English and Spanish.
Sure. I hadn't thought about that. Just bang it out now.
Do we start doing that for future rezonings and special use permits?
Yes.
Okay. Not a problem.
Item 10F, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit, SUP, to allow a battery storage energy facility in a general retail district located along the north side of East Harrison Avenue, approximately 485 feet east of Loop 499, bearing a legal description of two acres out of the west, 6.88 acres, Block 49, Palmetto Company subdivision, planning and development.
Okay. Mark, go ahead.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, a special use permit issued to allow a battery storage energy facility in a general retail district located along the north side of East Harrison Avenue, approximately 485 feet east of Loop 499, bearing a legal description of Lot, of two acres out of the west, 6.88 acres, Block 49, Palmetto Company subdivision.
So moved.
Uh, we're going to have some.
If I could.
Questions?
Question for the battery folks. And I ask this every time we open up, okay? I, I read your stuff, and I see when it talks about fire and all that kind of stuff. My question always is, is what's, what's the impact of flooding on an installation like this?
Talking about impervious earlier, as y'all heard the drainage, there is really, the only impervious, this is going to be on helical piles, so there's not really much impervious to the ground. The access road for fire protection, it will be impervious. It's very minimal. I don't know how much y'all know about drainage if I say this, but we're talking like .04 acre feet per acre. It's, it's, it's minimal. We're talking like 1,300 cubic yards.
Okay. And my other question is, is how often does somebody actually come and eyeball the site to see if things have been tampered with or anything like that?
So this site will be monitored 24/7 remotely. If in fact, there is anything that could happen, we will have, and it's fractal EMS who will, who will remotely monitor this.
remotely monitor this. If anything were to happen, someone could be onsite within four hours.
Thank you.
Javier, I sent you guys a list of questions. Javier Mendez got a little nervous there. Javier Zavant.
These are the, these are the tax projections that, for the Black Mountain project?
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic?
These are the property tax projections that were provided for the Black Mountain project on Loop 499. For the SMT project on Tucker, we did not get any. This is, uh, one of the SMT projects is already operational on Tucker Road south of Lincoln. Uh, so this is the information I got from the appraisal district. Uh, late this year or early in January of next year, they're looking at paying 23,000, uh, well, 13,000 to the City of Harlingen in property taxes based on an appraised value of 2.5 million. Uh, so we're, we're going to start getting funds. The, the Black Mountain project on Loop 499 is a much bigger project, so that's going to generate more, uh, more property taxes. And then they, they provided projections for their project. Oh, and then here's a map that shows the different projects. So one is the first SMT. It was approved in 2022. It was operational late last year. Number three is Phase 2 that has, that has not been, even though it was approved, it has, we haven't received any plans for that project. And number two is the Black Mountain. Uh, we have preliminary plans and we expect to issue a permit for that project late this year and it's going to be a substantial building permit. Uh, and then the number four is the, the brand new project. And then the, the applicants for this project, they, they provided, uh, the, the tax projections, uh, to the city, 54,000 the first year, 49,000 after that, and there's a depreciation, uh, like the other projects. And a total of a half a million over, over 30 years. So there's, there's a property tax benefits for sure.
Half a million over 30 years.
That's what their, that's what their project.
How much would we get if we put a neighborhood there?
It depends on the, yeah.
It's going to be a lot more, though. Probably. Correct. Uh, I see Orlando Campos trying to hide in the back. Can you pop up here? Orlando, I know that when you first came on board with us about a year, maybe a year and a half ago, we had the first project, which is the Black Mountain Energy, uh, right off the loop near the airport, a little further north than this. Um, and the EDC, I think, by and through Beverly, gave us a letter of support, uh, saying that this was the best use of the land because of its proximity to the airport, because of the fact that that land hadn't been used at all. Um, and now we're seeing in Harlingen, uh, unprecedented growth. We're seeing it in Frank's district down in the south. We're seeing it in District 5 to the west. We're seeing it, and we're going to start seeing it to the east as well.
District 3?
District 3 as well, correct. I apologize, uh, District 3. Um, do we believe that this one acre, because who's going to want to live next to it, right? Do we believe that this one acre project is going to be the best use of the land for this area?
Sure. Very honestly, I haven't really taken a look at this project and, uh, I think the very first project actually predated me before I came on board with this, uh, with the city. Um, however, I think that, that area, obviously, that property has been undeveloped for quite some time. And so I think that, uh, despite the, um, or rather, it's been for sale for quite some time, given its location within close proximity to our industrial park, I think that the land use, um, would be a good fit for this project.
Now, this thing is, if I recall correctly, it has to go through two votes, correct?
Two, two readings, yes.
Correct. Mr. Rose, I read in your packet and you, you again mentioned it, that you have in the past done a community benefit agreements essentially. Have you worked with any of the nonprofits, whether it's the animal shelter, whether it's another organization, uh, to create a community benefit agreement?
I mean, we will commit to that if that, I mean, if we can, with, yeah, of course, successful approval, absolutely, we would commit to whatever the commission would like us to do. Um, I think giving back to the community is a big step for us. Again, I mentioned, it's not us, it's not Harlingen, it's us together. Um, so absolutely, and one thing I want to mention, you mentioned a subdivision in that, in that area. One thing I do want to say is typically a single-family home uses about 29 kilowatts per hour. Um, you mentioned the growth. We want this city to grow. We want families to come here. The infrastructure of the grid right now cannot withstand much growth, to be honest with you. One thing that this battery storage facility will do is at high peak demands, it will be able to energize 681 homes. So you mentioned land use. That's a, a very good reason to have this in an area like that. High peak times, 5, 6 PM, when everyone comes home, you could energize that many homes.
Correct, but I, as I recall reading in the minutes, you all don't dictate maintaining that energy or you don't keep it local. You rely on AEP. So specifically, one of the questions that was asked of you is, we could have all these batteries in Harlingen, but the energy sent to Dallas, the energy sent to Houston.
No, that's understandable. It, it would never go to Dallas and never go to Houston. It would stay within one area of this AEP side. The, with the substation being within one mile, it's not going to go to Dallas, it's not going to go to Houston.
Could you, because we have to do this twice, could you bring that at our next meeting, both the CBA with the local organization, uh, as well as, um, I would like to see how we can keep that energy local because I don't want Harlingen, and my constituents have called me and talked to me about this, they don't want us to become a battery city. Um, and so I want to make sure that if we're going to do this, it's the best use of this land.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
I can, we have a, a relationship with AEP. I will definitely attempt to get some type of schematic where that energy will go, um, if they can give it to us.
Perfect. And you can work with Javier, Javier's phenomenal.
Yes.
And if you could get it to him by, what, uh, in a week and a half, that's when the agenda posts and we'll have sufficient time to review it.
Excellent.
In preparation.
Absolutely.
I think if we can get within a week, that'd be better because we need to get the agenda together. Correct. Thank you. In a week, and then if you could work with a nonprofit for CBA as well.
Absolutely.
Excuse me, I have a question, sir. Earlier, you have a, this is a private ownership, correct?
Correct.
And they have a facility next door, correct?
Correct, it's a, it's an education site.
Has he, obviously, uh, the, the owner wanted to sell this in the past. Is he leasing it to you or is he selling it to you?
He's leasing it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Hey, and one last thing. Uh, I'm happy you made it safely. I know you're out in Florida and you had the, the weather out there, so I'm happy you guys made it and hopefully you and your family are safe.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion, uh, motion passes.
Item 10G.
You read the caption at the beginning, right?
Yes. I couldn't remember.
Item 10G.
Uh, 10G.
10G, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading for a rezoning request from non-designated district to residential single-family district for a 55.90 acre tract of land out of survey 295 Stewart Place subdivision located along the south side of Garrett Road approximately 650 feet east of Altas Palmas Road, applicant Javier Nohosa, planning and development.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from non-designated district to residential single-family district for 555.90 acres of land out of survey 295 Stewart Place subdivision located along the south side of Garrett Road approximately 650 feet east of Altas Palmas Road.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10H, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on first reading amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, zoning, Article 7, Section 111 through 173, non-residential height restrictions by requiring a special use permit for buildings greater than five stories in height. Applicant City of Harlingen, planning and development.
Okay, Mark?
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, zoning, Article 7, Article 7, Section 111, 173, non, uh, non-residential height restrictions by requiring a special use permit for buildings greater than five stories in height, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Do you have a motion?
I have a question.
Oh, question?
Where's the location of this, where's this building going to be located at?
This is not, uh, project specific. Uh, there is a company that is considering Harlingen, um, in the, in the industrial areas, and so they expressed a concern with this five-story regulation, and so that's, that's why this ordinance is.
Got you. For you.
I expect to see skyscrapers now, Javier.
Yes, I may work on that.
All right. Sears Tower and all of that.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10I, consideration and possible action to approve the annexation services agreement for a proposed voluntary annexation of a 2.273 acre tract of land out of the extreme northwest corner of Block 176 Adams Garden subdivision C, applicant AEC Engineering, planning and development.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Item 10J, consideration and possible action to approve the vehicle towing ordinance on second reading amending Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 18, 46 through 93, four, through 46 dash 135, schedule of fees, and Chapter 46, Article 3, vehicle towing pertaining to towing standards and guidelines for tow's requested by police, citizens of private tow's, providing for applicant, applications, permits, regulations, certifications, and other safety requirements, providing for enforcement on, and prohibit, prohibitions, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, amending license and towing fees which may be charged within the city and other particulars, police.
Chief?
Mayor Protem and Commissioners, uh, the only change that needs to be made, uh, and of course Mayor Spud is not here, and I was out of town, so I didn't get these into the, the last draft, but, uh, she wanted to update the heavy wrecker requirements. So I have a short list here. She had caught a couple other.
It was the equipment list that she wanted to.
Yeah, the equipment list, sorry. Uh, basically stating the, the size of the wreckers and then needing to have dump trailers, a skid steer, uh, flatbed or low-ball trailers, pallet jacks, and a heavy-duty dolly. So I'm just going to add those in, but everything else will be the same.
The only thing we're going to do is just in the list that we had, we're going to remove the number required and just say that they have to have at least one of those individual pieces of equipment.
Did staff meet, uh, have a follow-up meeting with the, uh, the tow truck drivers to make sure that everyone had the opportunity to look it over?
We, we met.
We met. Again, right? A second time.
But it was, the, the issue was with the heavies.
Yeah.
So we just met with the one.
We only have one company that's the heavy wrecker and they meet all these requirements.
Right. All right, so you guys are good?
Yeah.
We, we have to read the caption. Yeah.
Mark?
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen, amending Harlingen Code of Ordinances at Chapter 18, 46, 93 through 46, 185, schedule of fees, and Chapter 46, Article 3, vehicle towing pertaining to towing standards and guidelines for tow's requested by police, citizens, or private tow's, providing for applications, permits, regulations, certifications, and other safety requirements, providing for enforcement and prohibitions, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, amending license and towing fees which may be charged within the city and other particulars.
Motion approved.
Second.
I had a motion? Second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10K.
I'm going to go ahead and move up a little bit, move around a little, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Melinda, I'm going to go and move over to item AA.
Item 10AA, consideration and possible action to approve action findings required by Chapter 2254 of the Texas Government Code and approval of a contract for municipal court fines and fees collection services with Lineberger, Gogan Blair, and Sampson LLP as special counsel to perform all legal services necessary to collect unpaid funds, fees, and court costs and as provided by Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Article 103.0031, and authorize the execution of such agreement.
Mayor Protem and Members of the Commission, uh, the contract with, uh, Lineberger expires in November of this year, and so we spoke with them and they agreed to, uh, do a couple of things. For this particular agreement, they can't lower their fees because they're based on state statutes at 30%. So they asked if we would consider, uh, renewal of their contract and, um, so I'm bringing this for consideration, uh, by the commission to provide a, a, either a two- or three-year contract depending on what the wishes of the commission are for the renewal of the fees and fines.
Mark, have you had a chance to look this over?
I have, I don't have any issues.
Are you good with everything?
I am.
Okay. Any more discussion? Are we doing two, three? What are we doing? Are you guys there?
Make a motion to approve a three-year contract.
Second.
Okay. Um, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Manny, can you also do BB?
Yes, sir. Consideration and possible action to approve action findings required by Chapter 2254 of the Texas Government Code and approval of a resolution authorizing the imposition of a 15% penalty for collection costs on delinquent taxes for tax year 2024 and subsequent years, and approval of a contract for tax collection services with Lineberger, Gogan Blair, and Sampson LLP as a special counsel to perform all legal services necessary to collect delinquent property taxes and authorize the ex, execution of such agreement. City Manager.
Mayor Protem, Members of the Commission, if you may recall, we have a, an existing contract with Lineberger for the collection of delinquent taxes. It currently is a 20% fee, uh, but they've agreed to reduce it. This is the one contract they can actually reduce the fee, so they've agreed to reduce them to 15%. Um, if we renew the contracts, I would recommend that we stick to a three-year contract to match the, uh, the previous contract that was awarded to the law firm.
Mark?
I have no objection to that either.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Do you want me to continue with CC or go back to K?
Is there anybody from CC here?
That's me.
Okay, just where you were in the beginning.
Okay. Item ten K, consideration and possible action to authorize a filing of an application for financial assistance with the Texas Water Development Board for funding the construction of priority wastewater capital improvement projects, Harlingen Water Works.
Mayor, Commission, Harlingen Water Works put in an application with the Water Development Board for eleven million eighty-five thousand for the existing upgrades to the wastewater treatment and lines that was previously approved with a ten million dollar bond that was closed out on earlier this year.
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ron, what was that interest rate? Is it a low interest?
The one we closed at was a two-point-five-five overall. We're assuming that there's a couple things that might happen with this eleven million. We do think we're green-lighted, but if we get the seventy-thirty agreement, we'll have to close within six months. We do believe the interest rates are gonna go down, so we may see a better interest rate than the two-five-five. If we do not get to seventy-thirty, then it'll be a subsidized interest rate, which, again, since interest rates are going down, we should see it better than two-five-five.
And the Federal Reserve has hinted that they will drop interest rates two more times, but slightly.
And this thirteen million handles all the improvements we need in the water sewage or the water treatment plants, right?
Not all of them, sir. It's a small portion of what is needed.
Hundred and forty million to go.
Hundred and, well, yeah. Hundred and forty-seven, actually.
Okay. On this specific project, does that thirteen million cover everything for just that treatment?
No.
How much more do we need just on this?
We're estimating a hundred and forty-seven million.
Okay, still on this one?
Still on, well, it's actually two projects. It's the headworks and the interceptor line.
Yeah, and the interceptor line, we're designing it right now.
Yes, the ten million is going towards the design of both of those projects, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Motion approved.
Oh, you made it.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Item ten L, consideration and possible action to approve the Development Corporation of Harlingen's final amendments to fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget, HEDC.
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten M, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution accepting the Development Corporation of Harlingen's proposal, proposed fiscal year 2025 budget, HEDC.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And on letter N?
UDC has recommended that we pass.
Okay, so on letter N, we're gonna pass it for today.
Okay.
Before Orlando sits down, Orlando, about a year ago at this time, we went over your three-year plan. We put in those dates. Would you be able to come give us a presentation?
Actually, my, the, we're working on our new work plan for this coming fiscal year. So we're gonna take that to our board for approval this month. And so the plan is that when we bring to you the proposed FY 2025 work plan, that we'll provide an update of the previous year's plan as well.
That's fantastic. Thank you so much, Orlando.
Absolutely.
And Beverly.
Okay. Item ten O, consideration and possible action to approve a facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen Cardinals Youth Sports League for use of the fields at Vestal Park and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement, Parks and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, City Commission. For the record, Javier Mendez, Parks and Rec Director. These, or this facility use agreement, as you all see on the, on the attachment, on the executive summary, there are some changes that we made. And so the park advisory board did make a recommendation at their meeting on September seventeenth. We do have all their current documentation in the office. And so if I could read out the changes that we made, it's the, the contract is solely for fields, facilities agreed upon in the contract. Any open green space at the city park is open and available to the public on first-come, first-served basis. The second one is, the city shall square and mark fields at the beginning of the season, and the league shall drag and mark fields from the point, that point forward. The third item is, the league shall submit yearly composition of board members or board to include one parent, participant representative, and in parentheses, we put, city representative will be allowed to attend those board meetings. The fourth one is, the league shall conduct two in-season board meetings, open to the public, participants, and parents. The fifth one is, the league is recommended to submit a bid to their affiliated association for one regional tournament per calendar year. And the last one is, a copy of the background checks of all board members and volunteers will be presented to the city.
So I'm just gonna ask a couple of questions, and if you could answer, because it's the same question for all of these upcoming letters. You have a nine-ninety? You have the nine-ninety form?
Yes, the ten-ninety-nine.
Well, the nine-ninety.
Right.
Okay. And insurance?
Yes, insurance.
You have all that?
Correct, yes, sir.
Great.
And then we also verify that they are still five oh one C three.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm gonna ask those same questions for everyone, but you could answer them without me asking.
Okay.
So I'm looking at paragraph M of your contract, and it has nothing to do with this organization, just in big picture. It says on M, it talks about how if the person is eleven or younger, you can't charge them more than a dollar, that the organization can't charge them more than a dollar, and if the person's over twelve, they can't be charged more than two dollars. How are we ensuring that compliance with that?
It's, it's tough. I mean, the only way we find out about it is, of course, if we get a complaint from a participant. But there have been inquiries from some of the leagues that they would like to charge additional fees. There are some organizations that do require a additional fee, so this is the reason that we rent out the fields to them. For example, Pony will require, sometimes they charge, to charge the entry for, I think it's five dollars.
And so by doing that, they're violating our contract?
Correct, right. So that's why they rent our fields. So they won't, they won't follow this, this contract, but they'll rent the field from us.
Thank you for making that distinction for me. I'll make a, man, if we could, I'd bang out all of these right now.
We have to read them.
Yeah, I know. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten P, consideration and possible action to approve the facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and Real Valley Amateur Adult Soccer Association for the use of the soccer fields at Vestal Park and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement.
Motion approved.
Second. Wait, wait, same question.
Yes, sir. That we do have all their documentation.
You know what? In fact, Javier, looking at this list of, oh, just so we can move a little quicker, all the way to, do they have the insurance for every organization?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so everything's clean and kosher?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Sir, if I may, on Q, the wording on the agenda is different than what the executive summary was. So here it's duplicated as item P, which is Real Valley Amateur Adult Soccer Association, and it should be Harlingen Adult Soccer League for the use of the Harlingen Soccer Complex. They're using Fields seven and eight.
Which one's Harlingen, which one's the Rio Grande or Real Valley?
So the, the one that you all just approved was the Real Valley Amateur. The one that's coming up is the, the adult, the Harlingen Adult Soccer League.
We're gonna have to bring it back, Mark?
Yeah.
We have it on the summary.
Okay. Okay. So we're good. Okay. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, so we move on to item R. Okay. Consideration and possible action to approve a facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and the TYFA Wolf Pack for use of a field at the Wilson Sports Complex and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement, Parks and Recreation.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten S, consideration and possible action to approve a facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen, Texas Bronco Baseball League for the use of the baseball complex at Victor Park and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement, Parks and Recreation.
Motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten T, consideration and possible action to approve a facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen National Bronco League for the use of the ball fields at Tom Wilson Youth Sports Park and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement, Parks and Recreation.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten U, consideration and possible action to approve a facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen National Bronco League for the use of the softball fields at the Arroyo Park Complex and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement, Parks and Recreation.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten V, consideration and possible action to approve a facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Harlingen National Youth Football League for, for use of the fields at Victor Park and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement, Parks and Recreation.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten W, consideration and possible action to approve the facility use agreement between the City of Harlingen and Harlingen United Football Club for the use of the Harlingen Soccer Complex and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement, the agreement, Parks and Recreation.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten X, consideration and possible action to approve a contract with Elizabeth Rose Flores to provide water aerobic classes, classes at Pendleton Park Pool and authorize the City Manager to execute the agreement, Parks and Recreation.
Motion approved.
Before we do, Javier, we, I know last couple times we've had some drama about this.
Yeah, we've, we resolved everything as far as lane lines and everything, so Mr. Tucker's no longer there, so it kind of, it makes it a lot easier.
Balance out.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten Y.
Thank you.
Consideration and possible action to implement a neighborhood revitalization project. This item was tabled at the regular City Commission meeting of September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. This item was requested by Commissioner Daniel N. Lopez and Commissioner Ford Kingsley.
I'll make a motion to remove from being tabled, bring it into play.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten Z.
No, 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 no. We're still on it, we just brought it back.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
So, I apologize, I got this to staff late. I gave, I drafted the white paper like Commissioner Bettis wanted. Commissioner Gabe wanted me to add some language, which is the paragraph that says scope, it's on the second page. And so I think we're ready to move forward. It was super interesting. Oscar, tell them the story about the city that reached out to you.
Well, that story that, that was written by Fernando got posted in the TML statewide page, right? So I got an email from that city by Austin, reached out to us, and he's, I don't know if you, you both went into the website, there's some really good ideas there, so.
Very good ideas.
Yeah, so I'm gonna let you guys decide on which one I think we should pursue. There's really one that I really, really like personally, but.
Talk to us.
Yeah, the one about the trailer and the chairs and, and all that stuff. I thought that was a great idea, and I can just envision how many people would use that, especially in the Vestal Park area and all that stuff there, because, so, I thought that was really good, though.
Like we discussed last time, this is not gonna be a cost-intensive program. We already do it anyways with, when you, when you take photos of like the potholes and the streetlights or all that, we're just taking a little closer look. Like I said last time, if it's anything big-ticket, it's gonna have to come before the commission for financial approval anyways. I just would like us to get going on this. The, the citizens are excited about this, and they like to see the tax dollars that work for them. This is, like I said, a white paper, we can keep finalizing and, and fine-tuning it. I know Commissioner Bettis, you want to make it into an ordinance, we can use this as the groundwork for it, and then you tweak as you feel necessary.
Okay. And this is going to, and I noticed it said commissioner, so this, that includes the language that's gonna require the commissioner to be there with the staff?
That, that is an ordinance language. I'm just saying this, because this is just a white paper at this point.
Voluntary.
It's voluntary, but if you wanted to draft the ordinance.
I would say, let's see, let's give it a look, get it rolling before we move the ordinance to.
Yeah.
I, I would recommend maybe a resolution, because an ordinance is full-blown, it's enforceable, but there's really nothing enforceable here because we're already doing it. So I think a resolution would keep it voluntary. Commissioner shows up fine, if he doesn't, fine, that's still.
Yeah, I, I fully understand. She's concerned, right? And we all agreed with it, remember? Even at our first meeting, we met there at the community center, all of us helped put out chairs, all of us put them back, that's just the nature of this commission. I appreciate it, but I want to just move, and if you want to put that in mandatory language, Reni, we can look at that later.
Well, it's because the way, the way I'm seeing it is because if you do it here with where the commissioner doesn't have to do anything, that this is just, this is, because you're right, by having the commissioner do it, it's gonna get, bring you closer to the community. You're absolutely right, that. But it also has the opposite effect. If you don't have it where the commissioner actually has to be there, this, this could have the opposite effect, where it's like, oh, I'm not gonna worry about, I'll just have staff go over there and check the districts because I don't want to do it myself. So, hey, Oscar, just go look over there and go do this for me, go do this for me, I'm not gonna bother with my district, and that would have the opposite effect. So that's why I would strongly urge you guys to put this into, like, I would agree with Gray with the resolution or something like that, but, or, I would prefer ordinance, because you want to make it where, you know what I mean? You're going to kind of push, because there's some commissioners, again, we don't know what happens, you know, in the future, but there's some commissioners that would prefer not to do that, and this would be a good thing to actually kind of, I'm not gonna say mandate, but push commissioners to be out there more in the community, and that way, if someone wants to come in, they'll have to be under the understanding of like, hey, this is not something that you'll just be able to dictate, you have to actually go out there in the neighborhoods, be part of the solution instead of just dictating all that, because that's how I see, things have always been in the past. Again, this commission's new, all, the majority of us are relatively new, and we're all active in our each district, and I love that, but I, I would just like something that we can push to make sure that that continues.
Yeah, I agree with Ford on this one. I think we proceed forward on this, and staff brings us back a resolution. Reni, please work on it, on the language you like, and then we can consider it at that point.
Okay, so what would this, so what is it exactly right now that you're approving? What does it give them permission to do, or what is it gonna do, Gabe?
He's gonna, well, we need to prove the concept of doing this, for one, and then direct staff to come back with either an ordinance or a resolution to implement this officially. But I think to Commissioner Kingsley's point, I think he suggested that we, we do this maybe once or twice to get a feel for.
Get a feel for.
Yeah, how it's gonna work. And then after that, come back and, and make it official with either the ordinance or the resolution.
Okay.
And I agree with that.
And that will also get us through the election to see who's gonna be sitting here at the table, too. I mean, hopefully it's the same group, you don't know. And it may get three people adamantly opposed to it.
Okay, well, like I said, I don't have a vote on it right now, so you guys do what you want.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item ten Z, consideration and possible action to authorize the mayor to execute a resolution of the City Commission for the City of Harlingen, Texas, expressing its nomination for the Cameron County Appraisal District Board of Directors, City Manager.
We received form from Cameron County Appraisal District letting us know that our appointee on the Cameron County Board is up, David Auger-Bright. So we either need to reappoint him, I think he's currently serving as a vice chairman of that board, yes, he is vice chairman of that board. And so we either have to reappoint him or appoint somebody new. I did ask him if he'd want to continue to serve, and he did say yes, so.
And how, how long has he been there? Because I know we've, we've been over and over again.
He's been there for a while.
Well, he, he's up in the next year or so to be the head of all of this, and this is an oversight committee. This is not a tax appraiser person. And what these oversight people do is, they get to make sure the money is, and the money and the behavior is all proper. And Brownsville looks like it's taking major control of this. So we need a Harlingen person back on.
So he's willing to continue?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, we're going to move on to item CC. Consideration and possible action to approve an amended inter-local cooperation agreement between the City of Harlingen and the Uni- University of Texas Rio Grande Valley UTRGV for the use of the pavilion at the Harlingen Convention Center, city manager.
Um, Mayor Protem, Minister of Commission, as you know, we approved an MOU with UTRGV for use of the soccer complex, the forward area, uh, the south portion of the parking lot. Um, they requested to use the pavilion. I met with Javier Mendez, our parks director, and that would interfere with some of the programs that the youth are having there, especially during the summer. So we had to come up with an idea, a different idea. I spoke with Javier Segura at the convention center and asked him if he would be opposed to renting out their pavilion at, at a fee. Uh, the fee to rent that out is five hundred dollars a day. I asked him if he would be willing to take three hundred and fifty, he said yes. It would give him revenue, it's for, going to be for at least six months, maybe a year. Um, and the, the UTRGV did ask for use of bathrooms, he said it wouldn't be a problem providing the bathrooms inside. And so, um, I know it's been a process, we're going back and forth with, with the university, but we're trying to help them out, they also want covered area for their students. Initially, they thought there would be about thirty students taking advantage of this program. They actually had about a hundred and twenty that showed up and were being transported to Edinburgh every day. Um, those students were not just from Harlingen, but from the surrounding area, so, um, it, it appears that it's going to be a win-win for everybody, and, uh, the convention center will make some money off of this rental, so I'm recommending approval.
I'm sorry, I, this is for the bus stop thing, right?
Yes, the bus stop, yes.
Have we reached out to them? I know that, uh, we're, we're looking at building that bus stop over there off of T Street. Have we reached out to them to see if there's any potential partnerships there? Because I know that we have a, a funding shortfall.
There, there might be, but they need a solution yesterday.
Correct, correct, and that's fine, but I think that terminal, that bus terminal on T Street, maybe...
We can make it certainly available to any, because now we're going to have that property that we purchased from AP as additional parking, so there'll be plenty of spaces they can park. And so I think in the long term, that might be a solution, that they can use that, so that they wouldn't have to rent any other space. Right now, they're just in such dire need that they need something to accommodate the students, and so they, they need something quickly. And I did check with Mark to see if we could use a resolution to actually have a long-term rental for the, um, pavilion, even though the fee structure was set by ordinance, and he said, yes, we could absolutely do that. So, but, uh, I haven't broached that issue yet, because we're trying to fix this short-term solution. Uh, but I'll certainly talk to them about that in the future.
Robert, thank you. Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item 10D, double D, consideration and possible action to reschedule the city commission meeting set for October sixteenth, twenty twenty-four to another date, city manager.
Uh, the mayor and the Mayor Protem will not be here for the October sixteenth meeting, so they've asked that we, um, consider moving it to a different date. Would, will you be back on the seventeenth?
I should be, uh, yeah, I should, I, no, I won't, I don't think so. That's fall break, so, no, probably not.
October, I'm like slammed, uh, so I cannot do the week, the twenty-second to the twenty-fifth, I'm out, but any other date.
Yeah, I'm assuming Mike wouldn't be able to do the twenty-third one.
I'm, I'm here.
You're sure?
Oh, yeah.
Well, does anyone get that chamber you're in on the twenty-third? Correct? Yeah, you have the chamber you're in on the twenty-third. So I don't know if you, I don't know, it's up to you.
Let's shoot for the twenty-first. Does that work for you?
Yeah, the twenty-first.
That's a Monday. Yeah, that's a Monday. We're just banging right out.
Works for me.
Frank?
Uh, give me a second here, if I can get to something known as a calendar. You said it's the, uh...
Monday.
Twenty-first is on a Monday?
Yes, sir. And then what about, I'm sorry, Mike, I'm sorry, Frank, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
We'll be meeting here, or probably at the library again?
Um, Amanda...
That's early voting.
Is that early voting?
That's the first day.
Okay, so, yeah, we'd have to meet, and Cultural Arch is out. Um, let me talk to the conventors. No, that's...
You have the convention center, the, the annex over there by the library, and this one's going to be used for, uh, early voting.
I, I think the convention center may have some space, I don't think they're going to use all of it. We just need it for one day, so let me talk to Javier Segura, is he here?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, there he is. Um, he's not paying attention.
The man is tired.
I wanted a backup date, because the mayor's not here to give us her. So if we can at least present her with two options, and then she picks whichever one's the best one.
Okay. So the twenty-first and, and what?
Uh, you said you'd be back on Thursday, you'll be free for...
No, he said that's fall break, he's out that week.
Uh, I can do the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth as well. I can't do the thirtieth. Twenty-ninth? The twenty-ninth is good for me.
Twenty-first and twenty-ninth, okay.
Yeah.
Does that work for you?
EDC meeting that night, I don't know.
Do you want to shoot for the twenty-eighth then?
No, you won't be able to do the twentieth, you can't do the twentieth. You have an event at the chamber on the twentieth.
On the twentieth?
On the twentieth.
Twenty-eighth.
So are you wanting the twenty-first?
Yes.
I'll accommodate you on whatever you all want.
At, at the convention center?
Yeah.
Twenty-first, we just need one, I think...
Yeah, yeah, it shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. What about the thirtieth?
I can't do the thirtieth, no. Thirtieth's out, because I have a, I, just like they have an, uh, an event at the chamber, I have one on the thirtieth.
What about the thirty-first? That's how we know, we're going to be at, uh...
Oh, we...
This is not going to be the trick.
Huh?
Trick or treat.
It's been a long night.
Yeah, it's been a long, all right, let's shoot for the twenty-first and Norma, um...
That's a date.
If she can't do it, then she can send us, you know, you guys can reach out to us and figure out another date. Just like we're doing right now? Correct. And in worst-case scenario, that week, if I need to, I'll just do it through Zoom, I'll join you.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to tentatively schedule the meeting on October twenty-first.
Correct.
Twenty-first, right?
Yes, twenty-first. At, at the, we're going to try to have it at the convention center. Thank you, Javier.
Okay. Um, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item eleven, board appointment, specifically appointment or discussion and possible action to include appointment and or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute, ordinance, or by law.
Okay, are there any board appointments? I had a resignation by Kristen Lucky on the convention and visitors bureau, and we'll be replacing her with Brianna Vela Garcia. Okay. Daniel?
Uh, I don't think so. If you can just pass me real quick for a second.
Mike?
Yeah, uh, need to remove Mary Torres from the museum advisory board, that's a woman I loved. She just passed away yesterday.
Wow, so did everybody.
And she actually got me into genealogy, she's a beautiful person. Uh, and so then, for senior citizens advisory board, Juanita Stringfield, and, um, for Keep Harlingen Beautiful, also Juanita Stringfield.
Have they been meeting Keep Harlingen Beautiful?
Hmm?
No, not, not yet.
I thought we weren't going to reappoint anybody, I thought we were going to let that shrink in size.
That's true.
Which one?
We're letting it... We were going to not replace, we were going to allow it to shrink.
Okay, I'd like to reappoint Rakesh Patel to the, uh, convention visitors bureau.
So Commissioner Masmar, the last one to the Keep Harlingen Beautiful, we scratch?
Yes, scratch that, yeah, yeah. We'll do senior citizens advisor.
No. Okay, so you're, just that one, Frank?
That's it.
Okay, I don't have any. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, and... No executive session, right?
No, we don't need to have an executive session.
Okay, so it seems that we're finally done, um, so the meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.